Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is a regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court of Hood County, Texas. Today is Tuesday, November the 24th, 2020. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in a sentry jury room at the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street, Granbury, Texas. Today, through Dr. Bill Miller and the Hood County Pastoral Council, we have a distinguished member of our clergy here in Hood County, Pastor David Samples of the Toler Baptist Church, to give us an invocation. Please rise.
Now, Bill said it was a prayer, not a sermon. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Let us pray together. Father in heaven, we are so grateful that we can gather together in a county where it's still okay to come and seek your face first. Lord, I pray that you would just give these commissioners your wisdom, your power, your strength, your understanding. Father, as we approach this day of national thanksgiving, Lord, we are grateful for so many things, and we're reminded that you told us to give thanks in all things, not just the things we like, but all things. And so, Lord, help us to get used to the things that aren't so good, and help us, Father, to give grateful thanks to you, because in everything, Father, you bring a blessing if we'll just look for it. Father, I pray that this day would be a day that honors you and that glorifies you. I pray, Father, as always, that you would remove this illness from us, that, Father, you would protect our county, that you would protect our county employees, that, Father, you would protect our county citizens, that, Lord, this would be a day that you would remove this COVID from us, Father, and bring wellness and health, and love and laughter into our communities. Father, we love you and we thank you, and we commit and dedicate ourselves to you today in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen and amen.
Amen.
You all join me in the Texas pledge.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please join me in the Texas pledge?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Pastor Samples. That was really nice. Thank you, thank you. You are free to go if you've got your flock you've got to tend to or whatever, so.
All right, thank you.
But any time. But thank you for coming down and sharing that with us. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much. The first thing we're going to have today under special presentations is we have Mr. Donald Kim, who is the District Extension Administrator for District Eight of AgriLife. He has a yearly update that he brings to us, and he's accompanied by our local extension agent, Mr. Brady Timmons, who's a good man, too. And so, these two good men are going to bring us up to date on stuff, and we appreciate you coming down. We attended a great meeting in Glen Rose. What was that, three weeks ago?
November 4th.
Boy, it was a great meeting, too. Really some good stuff.
Well, I appreciate y'all's support of that program, and thanks, Judge, for allowing me to be on today, as you said, for my annual visit to, one, on behalf of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service, show how much we appreciate the partnership that we have with Hood County in supporting the extension program here, and each year, my annual report. In addition, just to tell you thank you, is bring a newsletter that on the front I highlight a programming across all 21 counties in District Eight, and then on the back specifically to Hood County. On the front, about this is, oh, about every third year, I highlight 4H, and this year was a 4H year. And if you look at it, it's just some kind of general information about 4H and what District Eight has accomplished across all 21 counties. If you look, our first one is scholarships. Each year, last year, each year, the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service, our 4H Foundation, awards foundation scholarships at state roundup. Over my time here and the years before me in the DEA position, there's been a lot of Hood County 4H members that have received those 4H Foundation scholarships. Last year, there were 27 District Eight 4Hers brought home $306,000. There's a lot of quality kids in the 4H program, not only in District Eight, but in Hood County as well. Then you can see the different district events that go on across District Eight, whether it's FCH-related, whether it's ag and natural resource-related, whether it's 4H recordbooks or photography or whatever, you can see the participation that we have in District Eight. The other one I really wanted to highlight is our Leadership Lab, or what we call SURGE. Each district in the state, there's 12 of us, has a Leadership Lab, and it is the premier leadership event in each district for our senior-aged 4H members, which are 14 years old and above, and the training and the development focuses on leadership development. Out of that, at that program, each year, we elect about 10 4H members for our District 4H Council. I've been here before, and I talked, just a reminder, there have been a couple District 4H chairmen that have come out of Hood County 4H program, and that's a testament to the agents and the program that they have. Then, as we move into specifics, if you look on the back of the, to where it's specific to Hood County, ag and natural resources, you can see Brady's in cooperation with Johnson and Hood, Somerville County is the tri-county landowner development series. You can see the topics, the number of participants that participated in that. And as you well know, with your dealings, AgriLife Extension programming has changed somewhat since March, a lot of virtual opportunities. And the last one of these tri-county landowner program series that I attended, it was a hybrid program where you had the opportunity to come face-to-face as well as participate virtually. Lake Granbury Master Gardeners, you know the importance of master volunteers. This group of master gardeners, 73 strong, contributed 5,000 hours. You multiply that by $24 roughly for a volunteer, the value of a volunteer hour, and that's $120,000. So, you know, they give a lot, not only to extension, but it benefits Hood County clientele as well. And then the turf grass demonstration plot that Brady has here in the county, working with the turf grass specialists and the different varieties, and which one might do better here with these characteristics and so forth. I did ask, you know, I told Kelly when she left, which I knew when I hired her, you know, she would eventually want to go back home, but, you know, I have a saying, I always, I'll take a good one for two or three years rather than just an average one for a number of years. And that's why, you know, Kelly and I called her and I said, hey, you need to provide us some information of what you did before you left, and she sure did. Y'all know what she was able to do here. The freezer club that she had done, the number of participants and the number of meals they cooked for the families and that, and the importance of educating the clientele in food and nutrition, balanced meal preparation and so forth. The Better Living for Texans program, that's a program that focuses on nutrition education for our SNAP Ed recipients. You can see the number of participants there before Kelly left, and then the annual childcare conference that Hood County is a part of in collaboration with Tarleton, the number of clock hours and the professionals that participated. 4H Youth Development, in 2019, 2020, we ended the year with 184 members in eight 4H clubs, roughly about 100% enrollment in what we had last year. Livestock projects, you can see the number of Hood County 4Hers, the number of livestock projects they have, and then the participation in the various state shows. Healthy Lifestyle Ambassadors, you can see the number there, how many have gone on a step further to become a State of Texas 4H Healthy Lifestyle Ambassador. And from that, if I remember correctly, two or three of those young people went with Kelly when they got selected to go to Maryland to the National 4H Center to participate in a national healthy lifestyle program. So, again, quality youth. Then you can see the 4H contest, the participation at the county and the district level, as well as state-level participation. And then the Vet Science Program, there's five senior-level 4H members that are entering their fourth year of the program, and upon completion, they can become a Certified Veterinarian Assistant. So, that's a good program there. But again, none of this would be able to happen if it weren't for your help, your partnership with AgriLife Extension, your support, and I can't thank you enough for that. And again, on the selfish side, I appreciate y'all's support of the annual Judges and Commissioners' Conference. Fortunate for y'all this year, you know, with COVID, I guess that was a positive, because I had to move it to Glen Rose, so you didn't have very far to drive, so. But again, thank y'all very much, and I wish y'all a happy Thanksgiving. Just an update on Kelly's position. In March or April, due to COVID and the impact it potentially is going to have on the state budget, we were asked to give a 5% rescission back to the state on the budget we were currently in. Then we were asked to submit a 95% budget. So, we were on a hard hiring freeze. In September, we were able to submit priority positions, we thought, that need to be filled, and Hood County was one, was the one in District Eight. We didn't have any interest internally, but two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, I was able to submit a priority list for positions to be open external, and I'm waiting to hear back. So, I'll keep you updated, Judge, through Brady or myself, but it is on the list to be opened externally, so. Thank y'all very much.
Give our best to Kelly. She's an aspirant, isn't she?
Yes. Yeah, I told her, you know, when that DEA retired, and I'm the interim over District Three, so I told her she didn't get away from me that quick.
That's good. Well, that's a great report. You do a great job, and Brady does a great job here, too.
Yes.
And of course, Kelly did, too. And so, we're really appreciative to be a part of AgriLife. Thank you.
Well, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be what it is without y'all's support, and again, I can't thank you enough for that.
Well, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Well, thank you. Be safe. Y'all have a good Thanksgiving. Thank you, Brady. Okay. Next, that brings us to the Service Award, Ms. Melissa Welborn.
Good morning. Samantha Courtney is not able to be here this morning, so the next one will go to Elizabeth Stanley for five years.
Elizabeth?
Beth.
Elizabeth. Who is Elizabeth? Who is Elizabeth Stanley? I didn't know.
Yeah, yeah. Where'd she come from?
That's your professional name.
It's the big one. It's right where it goes, judges.
Yes, sir.
Okay, come around here. This is a great lady here. She's been doing an outstanding job, and she keeps that probate court and everything running, so she's a good one, and we like her very much.
Thank you.
And she's a good cook, too.
It's a privilege.
Elizabeth.
Kind of like Liz with Tiger, right?
Right. That's exactly right. Can we call her Liz instead of Beth? Two more answers to that.
The next one here is Lisa Sanford.
Lisa Sanford. Well, look at that, 10 years.
She's been slaving away in the jail for 10 years and proud to have her back, so it keeps everybody in line.
She keeps, good for you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Good.
And I just wanted to say, Samantha, she worked all night in dispatch, so I wasn't sure if she was going to show, and she didn't. And John Barry got sick yesterday and went home, and Angela Jones, I guess she's working, so we're off today, so anyway.
She's been with you for 20 years?
20 years. I even tried to shame her into coming by talking to her husband, but she's not here, so.
Well, I guess after 20 years, you don't have to show up for these things anymore. It's old hat. Good, thank you, Sheriff. Okay, the next announcement I'd like to make is the public participation forms. If there's any member out here that would like to speak on any topic on the agenda, Sheriff Dees has these public participation forms that you can fill out, hand back to the sheriff. The sheriff will then take them and hand them to Dean Arnsprung. He will put you in order, and then I will call you at the appropriate time and let you speak on the item for no more than three minutes. So, that brings us to the next item, the Consent Agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Judge, I just need to make one correction on the minutes. On the November 17th canvas meeting and the chair election, the following members that were present, on the minutes, we have Commissioner Eagle being there. There's no knock on him, he just wasn't there.
Okay. That's true. I'm sure he was doing heavy business in Precinct Four, so.
I didn't see these until this morning.
I was very busy. That one correction on there, is there any other exceptions to the consent agenda? Well, with that, can we, do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever to approve the consent agenda with the one correction pointed out by Commissioner White. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Now, this brings us to business to be discussed and considered for approval, and our old friend is back here. So glad to see him, Mr. Don Lenny, Road Operations. Mr. Lenny, what do you have for us, sir?
Good, good morning, Judge Masagil, Commissioners. This agenda item is the two-year renewal. This is an interlocal contract. These contracts last for two years for each entity that we have in the county. We do this under Section 251 of the Transportation Code. At this time, LaPan does not have any, any projects that are requested, and they just simply want to keep the contract going for another two years. Like I said.
School District.
Yes, LaPan School District. And we work off of Section 791 of the Government Code when we do do a project with any of these entities that, at the moment, LaPan ISD is the only one that we have current, which is nothing different. I mean, they come in, once they have a project, they'll ask to renew it, and we'll go through that, but LaPan's just keeping up with theirs. Road Operations recommends approving this contract renewal.
Okay, I think this is a good deal. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Judge, I'd like to make a motion to renew the interlocal agreement with LaPan School District.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Dever to approve the interlocal agreement with LaPan School District. Hear a second?
Second. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Lenny.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay. The next is Mr. Clint Head with Development.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners.
Okay.
The first two items, I guess, the one A, one B, we're going to do together. We've accepted applications for replat for Hermosa Hills Estates, lots 16R1 and 16R2, Block One, for the Landings Lot 3196R in Precinct Two.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Cotton to set a public hearing for those two items. Hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, Mr. Head, what else you got?
The second item, we'd like to update the court and let the court know that all the staff and engineer comments for Orchard 14 construction plans have been addressed, and we'd like the court to consider approving the construction plans and the developer letter of agreement for the final plat of Orchard 14. We have the agreement ready to sign if y'all choose to approve it.
You say you recommended that?
I'm sorry.
Did you say you recommended it?
I recommended approval.
Then I'll make the motion to approve the letter of agreement for the final plat for Orchard 14. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the Development Letter of Agreement for Orchard 14. Hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Now, we have the final plat of Orchard 14. It's the subdividing of 35.172 acres tract out of the James W. Moore Survey Abstract Number 344, Hood County, Texas. The preliminary plat of Orchard 14 was approved by Commissioners' Court on April 23rd, 2019. The construction plans have been reviewed and approved by staff and engineer, and the final plat will create 51 single lots and one reserve area. The property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct Two in the southeastern part of the county and will be served by public water and sewer provided by AMUD. There are three private streets proposed with this subdivision. The proposed streets will have a combined total length of 3,940.21 linear feet. Staff has reviewed this final plat and recommends approval as presented.
Okay, Judge, then I'll make the motion to consider the final plat for Orchard 14. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Cotton to consider the final plat on Orchard 14. Hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, now, we're going to have to convene into a public hearing to discuss and consider the following replats. This is Orchard on the Brazos, Lot 16R, and, well, let's take them one at a time, I guess. Okay, is that what you have? What are you recommending there?
We recommend approval. You mean to present it or just?
For Orchard on the?
Orchard on the Brazos, it's the replating of, it's the combining of lots 16, 17, and 18, creating a 6.067 acre lot called Lot 16R. It's in the Water Quality District of Precinct Two and served by public water and onsite sewage facilities. Staff has reviewed this replat and recommends approval as presented.
Okay, well, let's reconvene back into Commissioners' Court then, and do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yes, Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the replat on Orchard of the Brazos, Lot 16R.
Hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Next item, we're going to convene into a public hearing again to consider the Decardova Ranch Phase, Mr. Clint.
It's a replat of Decardova Ranch Phase One, Lot 13R, Block Six. It's the combining of Decardova Ranch Phase One, Lot 13, and Sierra Blanca, Lot Eight, Block Two, and it will be creating a 1.39 acres lot called Decardova Ranch, 13R, Block Six. The property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct Three and served by public water and onsite sewage facilities. Staff has reviewed this replat and recommends approval as presented.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead now and reconvene back into the Commissioners' Court to have a vote on the Decardova Ranch Phase One. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yes, Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the following replat of Decardova Ranch Phase One, Lot 13R, Block Six, Precinct Three.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner White to Decardova Ranch Phase Number One, Phase One, Lot 13R. Second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Now, we're going to convene into a public hearing to discuss and consider the following concept plans.
The first one's the concept plan of Oak Hill Subdivision, which will now be known as Bella Oaks Subdivision. The property is located at 1508 Knox Road, Toler, Texas. The gross site area for this concept plan is 208.29 acres. Out of the W.J. Arrington Survey Abstract Number 18, the C. Arrington Survey Abstract Number 10, and a T.W. Bundyk Survey Abstract Number 24, and a J.W. Smith Abstract Number 905. This concept plan proposes to create 75 single-family lots. This proposed concept plan is in the rural district in Precinct One and be served by well and onsite sewage facilities. The proposed site development plan, her concept plan, proposes to construct 10,260 linear feet of asphalt streets. There's one variance associated with this concept plan we also need to be discussed and considered prior to, or considering the concept plan. The variance is in Section 2, Section 6.4B concerning the maximum length of any block or street segment that shall be 1,800 feet as measured along the center line from point of intersection with other streets. The developer's concept plan has a block length at plus or minus 1,840 feet due to the physical size and of the development, and allow additional offsets and easement space on the corner lots. A variance will be needed to allow the block to exceed 1,800 feet. Staff has no objections to this variance. All comments to this concept plan have been addressed. If the court chooses to grant the variance, staff recommends approval as presented.
You discussed this before, of course, this is my precinct. Reason for the variance is because of the overside of the cul-de-sac, right?
So, longer, longer lots and the deeper it's the size of the?
I don't like variances, but this is kind of a common sense variance where it's not going to affect anything, and the cul-de-sac's going to be changed, so.
So, you're just talking 40 extra feet of?
Yeah, it's plus or minus 40 feet on each end. You know, it's 40 feet, so we split it 20 feet on each end, longer.
Okay.
This is Kevin, that dude's out there in court because he's going to Harrah's. He gets in the court, so that's why I kind of said it was there, so Kevin can be in the loop on it also.
Are they going to make a longer, I mean, a larger cul-de-sac?
I believe, yeah, that it's required. If there's no fire danger out there, they'll have to make the larger cul-de-sac.
Is the fire marshal okay with all this?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Joe LaCroy has asked to speak on this one. This is the 125A. Am I right, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
On Bella Oaks, okay.
Good morning, sir.
Judge, good morning. Commissioners, good morning. Joe LaCroy with Barrett Hampton &amp; Brown Engineering. We are the civil engineers on the project. Thank you for hearing our case this morning. Thanks, Clint, for great presentation. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Did we make it clear about the block length that we're pursuing?
Yeah.
Gives us a little additional space to put an easement on the property.
I'm kind of cautious of variance, but this is kind of a common sense variance where it's not going to affect anything, so.
Yes, sir, we agree.
I'm going to be with the court.
Thank you.
Okay, well, good. With that, we're going to reconvene into the Commissioners' Court again, and do I hear an appropriate motion concerning Bella Oaks subdivision?
Yes, Judge, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Bella Oaks subdivision and approve the variances associated.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Dever regarding the Bella Oaks subdivision. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. One more. We're going to convene back into a public hearing to discuss the South Bank project. Mr. Head.
All right, we're going to discuss and consider the concept plan for the South Bank. The property is located at 6316 G. Road, Granbury, Texas. The gross site area for the concept plan is 79.142 acres of the G.T. Walters Survey Abstract Number 594.
How many acres did you take that in?
79.142.
79?
The Nancy Dotson Survey Abstract Number 151. This concept plan proposes to create 53 single-family lots, one gas well lot. The proposed concept plan is in the Water Quality District in Precinct Three and will be served by AMUD water and onsite sewage facilities. The proposed site development plan proposes to construct approximately 5,272 linear feet of public asphalt streets. There are no variance requests associated with this concept plan. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Where is this at, Bruce?
It's up there, it's on G. Road. At the front gate of Con.
Back from G. Road, sorry.
Right next to Grand Terra.
Next to what?
The subdivision known as Grand Terra.
Okay, again, we have Mr. LaCroy that wants to speak on this.
Good morning again. For the record, Joe LaCroy with Barrett Hampton &amp; Brown. I'm here to, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, motion is made by Commissioner Dever regarding the Bella Oaks subdivision. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. One more. We're going to convene back into a public hearing to discuss the South Bank project. Mr. Head.
All right, we're going to discuss and consider the concept plan for the South Bank. The property is located at 6316 G. Road, Granbury, Texas. The gross site area for the concept plan is 79.142 acres of the G.T. Walters Survey Abstract Number 594.
How many acres did you pick that again?
79.142. The Nancy Dotson Survey Abstract Number 151. This concept plan proposes to create 53 single-family lots, one gas well lot. The proposed concept plan is in the Water Quality District in Precinct 3 and will be served by AMUD Water and Onsite Sewage Facilities. The proposed site development plan proposes to construct approximately 5,272 linear feet of public asphalt streets. There are no variance requests associated with this concept plan. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Where is this at, Bruce?
It's up there, it's on G. Road.
Okay.
At the front gate of Con.
Right next to Grand Terra.
Next to what, sorry?
The subdivision known as Grand Terra.
Again, we have Mr. LaCroy that wants to speak on this.
Good morning again. For the record, Joe LaCroy with Barrett Hampton and Brown. I'm here to, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
What lot sizes are, are those going to be? One acre or more, or at least?
Yes, sir.
But nothing less than one acre?
No, nothing less than one acre.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, let's convene back or reconvene into Commissioners Court now. Do I hear an appropriate motion regarding the concept plan on South Bank in Precinct 3?
Yes, Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the following concept, concept plan for South Bank in Precinct 3.
Second. By Commissioner White to approve the concept plan for South Bank in Precinct 3, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment on these developments. Don, you've been here for doing this so many years. Have you ever seen the floodgates open on the building like it has been in the last eight months?
No, no.
And I think it's not going to quit either.
No.
So, guys, be ready, we're coming.
Really?
Yeah.
We're growing.
We're growing.
That's what we're here for, right Kevin? And where's Jack Wilson? There, there he is, right there. Welcome aboard. Okay, all right. Financial, Ms. Becky Kidd.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. For the fiscal year 2020, our expenditures were $22,159.32. For fiscal year 2021, expenditures were $964,648.57. We have reviewed all these invoices and we recommend payment. We also would like to know if you have any questions regarding invoices over $10,000.
Just for clarity, how much longer are we going to continue to get invoices for 2020?
We are done.
We're done?
I stuck a line.
A line in the sand, did you?
I drew a line in the sand.
Okay.
We have to close it at some point because it's time to start getting reports ready for the outside auditor, so we're officially finished with 2020.
Okay. With that, Judge, I'll make the motion then to approve the expenditures for fiscal year 2020 at $22,159.32, and then fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $964,648.57.
Okay, motion is made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the expenditures, stating the record. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner White. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. What else you got, Ms. Kidd?
Monthly reports. We have received the monthly reports you have on your agenda. We have no issues with these. There were a couple that were amended and a couple we're still waiting for, but we have no problems with these reports and we recommend acceptance.
Okay. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yeah Judge, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the financial reports received, reviewed by the Audit Department for the period of November 1st, 2020 through November 15th, 2020.
An appropriate motion has been made by Commissioner White to approve the financial report received by the Audit Department. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dever. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Under miscellaneous, this is a very nice one. This is, it's nice, nobody can, all right, there you go. Is anybody from the county attorney's office here? Mr. Mills, is this yours going to be to request to have the Tree of Hope on display at the Justice Center? But I understand that this is going to be virtual this year because of COVID, but?
Right, the event would be a virtual event on December 11th. So, we're just asking to put the tree up. I hope it'll get today, but I mean, that's what it's scheduled for on the agenda there, but we're, we're ready to go just to put the tree up and then have a virtual event on the 11th, so.
I think that's a very good, it's a very good event. I move that we accept the county attorney's request to have the Tree of Hope on display in the Justice Center from Tuesday, November the 24th, 2020, through January the 4th, 2021. And that Tree of Hope event or ceremony would be held on the night of December the 11th, and that will be virtual. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries five zero. Next, consider and take appropriate action to approve the City of Granbury's event application authorizing use of the gazebo by Grace Classical Christian Academy Psalm Sing on Friday, December the 18th, 2020, from 3:30 PM to 4:30 PM. Do I hear a motion to have some good classical music and to hear that on the square?
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made by Commissioner Dever to approve the City of Granbury's event application for the Grace Classical Christian Academy. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Eagle. So, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Item number three, consider and take appropriate action for YMCA roof repair due to hail damage last spring. The Honorable Jay Riley.
Honorable.
Judge, Commissioners, last spring, we had a hailstorm come through over at Acton where our YMCA building is located. And basically, there was no real structural damage to that building. It's got a TPO roof on it and it was in good shape. We did identify some workmanship issues when the roof was installed and, and got with YMCA, and they're telling us that they got those repaired. That was just some loose stuff. But what we did have, our coverage covers cosmetic damage. So, part of that roof is metal. And all along the parfa wall is metal and it's got dents in it. So, working with Melissa, Tac came out, adjusted the roof, looked at the roof. They looked at the damage. And Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, but we received a check from Tac for $69,414.26 for damage. And we decided we'd move forward trying to look into getting that repaired. I contacted Tac and, and they gave me the name of three roofing companies that they've worked with. They don't endorse them, but they have worked with them and had good luck with them. Prime, Merritt, and Paragon. I contacted those three individuals. I got two, Merritt and Paragon, to come out and look at the roof. Prime didn't come look. They, they never showed up. The only bid I got back was from Paragon. And that bid was for $76,230 to repair the roof. Now, the way I understand it, the reason ours was $69,414, does that include the $5,000 deductible? It does not, okay. So, with the $5,000 deductible, my understanding is the Y will pay for that. That's going to?
Part of the policy?
Through the contract.
Through the contract?
Right. That leaves us short $1,815.74 if we choose to go with Paragon.
Don't really have any choice, do we? It's the only one we got.
Well, right now, I mean, I can continue to try to find somebody, but I've been trying to work with Tac and use some of these larger companies out of the metroplex that are very reputable. And that's, it's a small job to them, but, so it's kind of hard to get those folks out. The roof is very large. The steel is made on-site and then crimped. It's a raised rib roof, so not everybody can do this roof.
Do I hear an appropriate motion to go to Paragon?
One more question. On page 2 of this letter, and maybe I just missed it. From Paragon? No, yeah. The actual, actually, this is from Tac. Actual cash value, September 11th, 2020 letter. The second one, they've got an atomization of the damages and they paid us $69,414. Is that what you told me, told us?
Yes, we have received a check.
So, they, they depreciated $6,800. So, where's the 1,800? I'm, I'm missing where the 1,800 short is.
Well, the $6,800 is actually recoverable once the project is completed. But we have to show proof of the project being completed and being correct.
So, do we have to pay the 1,800 and then they reimburse us, reimburse us the 68?
Yes, as long as the project is completed.
As long as it's completed.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion to allow Paragon to do the, to do the roof project.
Okay, motion is made by Commissioner Dever to allow Jay Riley to complete the roof contract in accordance with what has been stated in the record. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number four, consider and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign the interlocal agreement for continued participation in the Regional Public Defender for Capital Cases Program. This is where a number of counties, I think it's 184 counties, participate when you have an indigent that commits a murder trial, sort of what happened here in E. Rath County on the Chris Kyle case. And that really did put a financial burden on E. Rath County. And this cost, I wanted to really make sure that we had and were participating in this program, because I knew about the program when I came in and we have been. And it costs Hood County about $20,000, $19,000 plus a year to be in this program. And it's really worth it because if you get an indigent that, and you're going to go for capital murder and it's based upon population and then how many murder cases you've had, and I just think you've just got to have this insurance. And I know, Mr. Mills, you don't really prosecute capital murder cases, but I think you will agree that this is a good insurance for Hood County to continue to participate in. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I think it is also. So, I would like to make the motion that we go ahead and allow the county judge to sign the interlocal agreement for continued participation in the Regional Public Defender for Capital Cases Program. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. All right, next, this is a good, easy one. It better be easy. It's to consider and take appropriate action on retiring Constable Precinct 3 Kathy Jividen to purchase her weapon in accordance with the Government Code 6114051 for purchase of a firearm by an honorably retired peace officer. Okay.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. As you've just read, as, as long as she meets the criteria, which probably all of us feel she does, she's allowed to buy her service weapon and take it with her. According to 614053, the purchase price of this firearm is determined by y'all. Now, I didn't know what you would want to do. Totally up to y'all. I do, I did get some quotes just to see an average price. So, if y'all want that information, then we'll give it to you. If you don't?
This gun's seven years old, right?
Yeah, seven or eight years old is what it is right now. Better not have.
And the sheriff himself gave me the holster for it. It's his private.
All right, so it's a match.
Over the years, GT Distributors has been the law enforcement distributor for the discounts for, like, Glock pistols. And this was printed off yesterday. The price that they've had is $398.20 for this pistol, but this, that's brand new. This is a few years old, so.
Nelda, can I ask you a question? Can this court just award that gun without any price?
You know, I don't know for sure, but if nothing else, a dollar would do.
That's what I like.
I mean, she's worked 38 years.
I, I, I would have to have Matt look at the statute and let me know because I don't know.
Well, that's seven years of as much use as she has done in stopping bank robbers around in that area up there. I move that we let her have it for a dollar.
I'll second that.
Okay. Kind of judge. Miss Kathy Jividen have her firearm weapon that she has used for all these years for a dollar by me and second by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Miss Jividen, do you think you have that dollar? I can even loan you the dollar.
There's no one back there, Bob.
Somebody in the back's already going to pay the dollar.
What'd you say? It will be there. Okay, well, I just want to say thank you so much. I appreciate that. I didn't expect that, so.
We appreciate your service.
Look at that.
Dever's wanted it, he's got it.
That's what I'm talking about.
Treasure, make sure, make sure you get that.
Great.
Treasure, you own this doctor now or later?
Yes. I've trusted him for this long.
You all get a receipt for that also?
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Nelda. All right. Item number six, discuss, quote, "do your part," end quote document of one-page list of suggestions and take appropriate action regarding current status of COVID-19 in Hood County. Mr. Eagle?
Yeah, Judge, I put this on the agenda basically at the request of Chris Kaufman. And I'm going to try to remain neutral on this as much as possible. But last week, I received an email that says I'm requested to attend an emergency meeting at the ELC at 9:00 AM. This was on Wednesday for Thursday, November 19th. And the meeting was to update and inform us of current state of COVID-19 and our current operational status of our hospital EMS services. And I've been out of the loop on this for quite some time, and I didn't realize that this was a secret meeting when I read this agenda item. And I was requested to attend the meeting because Commissioner Cotton had other things going that he couldn't attend it. And the email was addressed to many people in this county. City council members, city manager, police chief, Baylor Scott &amp; White people, Lake Granbury Medical Center people, school superintendent, EMS reps, and others. And I just want to get some background information on this because this, in my legal opinion, this email that I've received is a subject, is subject to an open records request. There's no privileges that attach to it, no attorney-client, no attorney work product, no real estate deal, no personnel issue, no indication on its face that there's any exception under the Open Records Act. And I didn't find out until the day of this meeting that this was a secret meeting. And one of my things when I ran for this office was transparency. And I'm really having, I'm, I'm really having issues right now with this when I went to this meeting because when I went and sat down at the meeting, our county clerk was walking out because she had been told to leave. And then two, a citizen and a constable walked in after I did, and they were told to leave because they weren't invited to the meeting. And that was the first time, I had, like I said, I didn't have any clue that this was some sort of meeting that was going to be withheld from the public viewpoint. Our emergency manager told two elected officials that this meeting was private only for, for leadership only. And when a citizen asked what we were discussing, he was told that this is a private meeting for leadership only. Now, we're in a, we're in a period, we're in, we're eight months plus into a governor-declared disaster. We're still under Governor Abbott's declared disaster for COVID that he has to renew every 30 days. And I made a comment in this meeting that a lot of people that I know and constituents in my precinct are sick and tired of being locked down or threat of lockdown and talking about mandatory wearing of masks, which was not, because right now, we don't have such a thing, but it's, it's, it's in the air. And I've read this before, but I'm going to take the opportunity to read this again because I don't think I can read it enough. Because I'm just, I'm asking for help here. What are we, what, what do the citizens in this county deserve and what do they, what do we keep away from them? This is section 552.001 of the Texas Government Code. Policy and Construction of Public Information. Under the fundamental philosophy of American constitutional form of representative government that adheres to the principle that government is the servant and not the master of the people, it is the policy of this state that each person is entitled, unless otherwise expressly provided by law, at all times to complete information about the affairs of government and the official acts of public employees and officers. The people in delegating this authority to its government do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for them to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created. Provisions of this chapter shall be liberally construed to implement this policy. And in Part B, it reiterates, this chapter shall be liberally construed in favor of granting a request for information. So the punchline on this deal is, come on. Why are we doing, why are we having meetings about COVID that we've had for, been going on for eight months that we're leaving people out? And here's the biggest kicker for me. I've been left out. They had had a meeting the Wednesday before this meeting that I didn't even know about. I only found out it when Commissioner Cotton called me and said, hey, I, I can't be there tomorrow. Will you cover for me? And I said, sure. So my question, so I'm a little bit frustrated because our emergency services person doesn't work for the city, doesn't work for Chris Kaufman, doesn't work for EMS, doesn't work for the hospital. He works for the county. And I'm, my question is, why am I being left out? I mean, I know y'all don't like to hear what I got to say. I mean, I understand that. But other than not wanting to hear what I got to say, why am I being left out of the loop on this? And what I would like to do is I'd like to see some statutory authority for how this is a leadership-only meeting. Show me where the definition of leadership is and how it's being, it's exempt from open meetings. And why is the public being kept out of something that I think the public has a right to know about?
Mr. Webster, would you like to respond to that?
More with you, Judge.
I'm not done.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. But you can come up. A lot of citizens are tired. I was told in this meeting the other day, when I pointed out that there's a lot of citizens who are tired of this. And that I have people that I, that are in my constituents, people who vote, voted for me, people I know, many people, not just, not just me, that express those concerns to me. And I was told that that's just Dave Eagle's opinion in this meeting. And yeah, it's Dave Eagle's opinion. I questioned wearing masks. I questioned many, many things. I've questioned this from the get-go because scientific study, one after another, with statistics, models, hypothesis, control groups, and non-control groups are finding that there's no significant, statistical significance difference between wearing a mask and not wearing a mask. And I'm supposed to, it's, it's almost as though I'm being told that I've got to ignore all that and that I'm not relevant when I bring that up. And I think I am relevant, A, and I think I represent a lot of people in this county, B. So I'm just asking, I know that we've been, we were told from the get-go it's going to spike, weren't we? Last March, we were told that it's, oh, it's going to spike again come about winter time. And sure enough, self-fulfilling prophecy, it's spiking again. Of course, we don't have a good definition of what testing positive means. I've, I've talked to people that tested positive that had a runny nose. I've talked to people that tested positive that didn't feel anything, and then there's been people that's gotten sick, kind of like the world is, kind of like a flu. So I'm just asking to, let's, let's try to be more transparent. Let's try to be more transparent to the citizens and give them the benefit of the doubt that they're smart, they have sense enough to take information given to them by their elected and appointed government and make the right decisions for themselves. And I sure would like to be included in the next meetings that come up regarding what public officials and elected officials and appointed officials are cooking up to do in response to COVID. I'm done.
Okay. Now, Mr. Webster, would you like to come up and respond?
What would you like me to respond to, Judge?
Well, as to, well, first of all, I guess there was one silver lining to always everything. I was out with the stomach virus when this was happening, so I was not at the meeting, was not invited, but as I understood it, there was some statistical information from the state dealing with hospitalizations and things of that nature that were supposed to be confidential. At least, that's what drifted down to, to me. Is that right? Am I on the right as to why that was limited?
Yes, sir. Under Chapter 418 of the Government Code, Emergency Management Operations, you have operational briefings. And so maybe I used the wrong terminology when I sent y'all out the email about the emergency meeting. But it was an operational briefing to brief certain members of our task force that's been operating in the COVID, to make determinations, to share information, so we could figure out what our game, our game plan is going forward. Within those operational briefings, you discuss information that is not public, it's not for the public. The public doesn't need to know everything that's going on at the hospital that is within that healthcare industry's confidentiality. And so the operational briefings, which the Government Code allows me to invite every one of y'all. They're not recorded meetings, they're not open meetings. It allows me to brief every one of y'all, but through, since my tenure here, everybody kind of gets a little jumpy when we have more than three. So I've always invited you, Judge, and one other commissioner. In this case, since I knew you were sick, I'd been talking to you on the phone. I asked Commissioner Watt and Commissioner Cotton. Commissioner Deaver couldn't come because he was out sick with the COVID, so they came. At the end of the meeting on Wednesday, Commissioner Cotton said he could not be here. We discussed, and I said, please invite Commissioner Eagle. And so that's what we did. But the meeting, the operational briefings that we've had in the past and this one, we had gone several months because there really wasn't anything to discuss. COVID was going along, it was doing its thing. As Commissioner Eagle has pointed out in the past, it was just, it was just going. There wasn't really anything to brief y'all on, other than the questions you would ask me occasionally, you and the mayor, about how's the hospital doing, how's our healthcare doing? What's changed that is since September 1st, 55.4% of our COVID positives have occurred since September 1st. We've got roughly a little over 1,800 cases. Of that, 1,017 have occurred since September 1. Our hospitalization rate has more than doubled because of COVID, pushing on their abilities to function without being in critical stage. And so a lot of that meeting hinged on what we're doing to help the hospital, what's going on with our healthcare industry, and what's going on as a whole with the EMS service and our hospital. And so that's, yes, that's basically what the meeting was. But the reason that certain people aren't allowed is because I don't need from operational briefing, everything to end up in the paper or on Facebook concerning what we're discussing is a healthcare confidentiality. Now, what y'all tell me afterwards to, to talk about, I'll be more than glad to. And a matter of fact, I've got several text messages that we're going to go back to doing our once-a-week news stories that we were doing to start informing the public because we've asked them to start doing certain things that came out of that meeting based on what you have on the agenda.
Commissioner Eagle, did, did you help draft this document that went out? Did you participate in that?
In?
In this document that's signed by the mayor, the judge, and the public?
Okay, so I hear, I know where you're headed with that. So there's a document that I put on, on the agenda. It's, it's called, well, it doesn't have a title to it, but this document, to my knowledge, was drafted by Trish Reiner, a city council member. And it's a one-page document that's got suggestions and, and requests. And I stayed after, everybody left, because they asked if I had any input on this document. And I said, the only thing I can see is to track GA 29 of the governor's order that's currently in effect. And I also told them that I could not sign off on this document because we, because I, we have to put this on the commissioners' court to, to review it, to discuss it, and to decide whether it should be agreed to by the commissioners' court. Jay Riley decided to go get the judge to sign it. That's his business. That's his business, and that's between him and the judge. The bottom line is, yes, I did. I, I suggested that we track the language of GA 29, and I agreed to put it on the commissioners' court, and that's why we're here today. And I did. I did what I told them I'd do.
So is that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. One other, we have Nathan Quiswell that signed a public participation form wanting to speak on this item. And also, Dr. Granick, you would be next to speak on this item after Mr. Quiswell.
Now, Judge, just real quick, before we get started, if I could call your attention to Section 4, Paragraph A of the Hood County Commissioners Court Rules of Decorum, I would like to get the five minutes that's outlined there.
I stated before that it's three minutes.
Yes, but the rules state that it's five minutes, Judge. And the rules outline a, a deal for variance, if you want to go through that.
Show me what you're talking about. You got a?
Section 4, Paragraph A, yes, sir.
Mine says three. Do you have them here?
Pull it up on the website, it's documented.
So you want to exercise your full five minutes?
Yes. And also for anyone else that signed up to speak, it's not just about.
Well, Mr. Mills, would you check this out right quick and see if this is? Because I, everybody else is always.
Section 4, Paragraph A.
I thought I could do it.
Well, I, I think there was a deal where like if there was a big list of people, we could cut it to three, but if it was hardly anybody or just one, it was normally five was the default. Is that?
It's Rules of Procedure Conduct, it's online.
Okay. I think that's what we, I think that's what it is, but I haven't looked at it recently.
Yeah, the commissioners' court can shorten or length, can shorten it or lengthen it, but it's five minutes from what I'm seeing right here.
Okay. Well, I'll try to pull it up.
It's five minutes, but I thought that the court had the discretion to shorten it or lengthen it.
Well, I think there's another clause, like if there's going to be a long meeting or a bunch of people sign up, then we can just say three minutes for all 10 of you or whatever.
How much is a bunch?
I don't know. Is that what it says?
Let me, let me, let me read it.
Okay. I haven't read it recently, so I, you got me on the spot.
I want you to read it for me. This is for, this is for Section C, Judge.
Okay.
And this is for Section, it says, "In matters of exceptional interest, the court may, by a majority vote of the members of court in attendance at the meeting, either shorten or lengthen the time allocated for a particular member of the public, all members of the public, or the amount of time allocated for an agenda item." So we can, we can lengthen, shorten, but it is five minutes in, in the rules that we got online. No, and we have two people that's, that's speaking here today. I'm going to go ahead and keep it at the three minutes. That's what I announced at the beginning of the meeting here. I think everybody in this county, we've been talking about this for eight months. We know what's going on. We have read. Everybody has seen what is going on. And I think that Hood County residents are very intelligent. They know what they need to do. I think that they are intelligent. We all know what we need to do. And if you're elderly and you're sickly, you need to stay at home and just make rules for yourself. What do you think of their? Anyway, Sharon, you're grimacing up here, but you have three minutes, Mr. Quiswell. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. This document was a product of Jay Webster's emergency meeting called last week. The emergency meeting was held between three government entities, the city, the school, and the county, and was carried out in private. Emergency meetings are covered under Texas Government Code 552, aka the Open Meetings Act. And this meeting should have been open to the public and media for discussion and documentation. You are not invited. You can leave now, I was told by Mr. Webster. Constable Shirley was also asked to leave. The county clerk was asked to leave, and the county attorney was not even invited. Why? As a member of this community, I believe Jay Webster should lack any authority to remove or deny entry to anyone wishing to attend an emergency meeting. Even in instances that enter a gray area, Hood County government should default to the side of transparency. Since this took place, I learned of a similar meeting the day before that took place. Again, why the secrecy? It's no secret that Lake Granbury Medical Center has a chronic staffing problem for various reasons, and it's no secret that this time of year, hospitals run close to capacity. If Lake Granbury Medical Center cannot keep our hospitals staffed, then perhaps it's time we explore our options. Now, this agenda item says to discuss and take appropriate action. I believe the appropriate action is to change to emergency operation positions from full-time and permanent to temporary positions or return the duties of the fire, return the duties to the fire marshal or the county judge. I've got a little bit of time left, and I noticed that since all this came out, the meeting has now been reclassified. Well, when it was announced, it was called an emergency meeting, and in the email, it was called an emergency meeting, and the day before's meeting was called an emergency meeting. Again, if a narrative is going to shift, that's fine. You know, this gets political at a certain point, but that doesn't make it right to keep the public from attending meetings that give pertinent information. And I'll leave you with this. We've created a permanent department for a temporary issue. Is that really in the best interest of the county? Thank you.
I want to, Ms. Kidd, you have been working closely with Jay Webster in getting the CARES money that the federal government has voted for states, and then the states have allocated to the various counties. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I want you to come address the podium here, please. This is kind of in response to Mr. Quiswell's deal that he thinks that the emergency manager coordinator, as I understood him, saying that that should be a temporary. coordinator, as I understood him, saying that that should be a temporary position. I would like for you to tell the people here in Hood County how much money Hood County has received thus far from the CARES Act, and it's not free money, it's money that the federal government has allocated to the various states, and the various states have allocated to various counties. So if Hood County didn't get their money, it would just cheat back, and to, I guess, the state emergency manager would have Hood County's money, is the way I understand it.
That's correct.
Now, I want you to tell this community how much money, because of the efforts of Jay Webster, has been brought into Hood County and is in the bank right now.
Over $2 million.
Over $2 million. And we paid Mr. Webster, what, $65,000?
Yes, sir.
$65,000 a year, and because of his action, we brought in over $2 million that is in the bank here in Hood County for the benefit of the individuals and businesses here in Hood County. Now, as I understand, that there's also another set of money that is still that he has made application for, and is in the pipeline to become due, is that correct?
There is a little left, but we're, he has done an excellent job.
Well, let me ask you this, you've been dealing in finance and auditing for a good while, haven't you, Ms. Kidd?
Yes, sir.
Do you think that Jay Webster has probably been a pretty good investment for the people and citizens of Hood County?
Well, Judge, if you ask some of the small businesses in town, he's their hero. And he's been a hero to us, taking care of everyone. It's my knowledge, after speaking with Dr. Jeremy Glenn, he said if it was not for Jay and you, he probably wouldn't have been able to open the schools. So this man has kept our schools open. I can't thank him enough, I have grandchildren in these schools, and boy, I want them in school, I don't want to homeschool them, so it's just been, he's been a blessing, and he's done a good job.
That was one of the reasons why I knew Jay Webster personally from 20 years ago, and I think his nickname throughout the state, when he was a retired captain for DPS, is Captain Disaster, because he has worked more hurricanes, tornadoes, explosions, fires, all over the state, and this man has connections and is respected by every law enforcement, and he was able to get supplies, like you said, for that school, and Dr. Glenn, at the beginning of this mess in March, gave us supplies that Hood County didn't have. And he generously gave the supplies in sanitation, all these PPE products, whatever he could get, he was the most generous to our whole county and kept our whole county, I think, sick. And I had a meeting with Jay Webster and says, "When we can help Dr. Glenn in getting anything that Dr. Glenn needs to keep his schools open, that is a top priority for us, not only because it's our children, but because of all the stuff that he's done for us too." And we've worked hand-in-hand with Dr. Glenn, and Dr. Glenn has told me the same thing, that Jay Webster is probably the singlest, biggest individual effort as to why Hood County Independent School District, or the Granbury Independent School District, was able to open on time, stay on time, and keep the COVID down because of the efforts that Jay Webster did. And when a breakout was done, he not only had the disinfectant, he had the sprayers. He went out there and did it himself to keep these classrooms safe for all our children. So I think at $65,000 a year, and he has managed to use his expertise and following the rules and regulations to bring money back to help our citizens, to help the hairdressers, the nail, and everybody, to help our county, to put this money back into county, to help us get over this COVID-19, whatever it is. I applaud Jay Webster, and I think he's doing a more than outstanding job. So I disagree with you wholeheartedly, Mr. Quiswell, and that's my position on it. Does anybody else need, would like to say anything? Dr. Granik?
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, and I want to congratulate y'all on how y'all have managed all of this, and on Mr. Webster, how he's managed it. Several months ago, we were in here discussing when we had 35 cases in the county, and saying, "Well, why are we having these masks and these restrictions?" We're now 20 times that number nationwide, we have, depending on how you count, in excess of 260 million, 260,000 people dead. I saw this morning that El Paso has a new mobile morgue to handle all the deaths, so this is a problem. I'm tired of wearing the mask, I'm tired of the restrictions, everyone in the county is. For 30-plus years in surgery, when I wore a mask in surgery, that was not to protect me, that was to protect the patient. We're wearing the mask to protect our fellow Hood County people. And it's burdensome, but the problem in this county, and in this state, and in this country hasn't solved, and until we have it managed, and we hopefully do not overwhelm the medical system, as is happening in several places in the country, we need to take the precautions. Vaccines are going to become available, it looks like, but they're not going to help yet. And I just want to thank y'all all, and all the other people involved, for the efforts they've put in to protect us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Granik. Ms. Seelander, please.
I didn't sign up to speak, but can I say something?
Well, you may, you have three minutes, come on up.
I have three things that I'd like to speak to.
Okay.
One, I want to speak to Mr. Eagle's idea about the mask, because I know there's science out there on it. I personally know, and I'm just going to cite two people, one never left her house, hardly ever, wore a mask, and she got COVID. Another that I know, that I saw in multiple places, that wore gloves, mask, long shirts, everything to protect herself, died from COVID. So, I kind of have that feeling that masks don't work very well. I just wanted to say that. Second thing I want to say is about our hospital and that. My husband got extremely ill, to the point that he was actually, his body was starting to shut down. I called 911, they picked him up and took him to the Granbury Hospital. There, he got excellent care. He got the antibody infusions, that now the governor has opened up to the state, he got the antibody infusions, and he got the, and I never say it right, the red, then severe, whatever it's called, I never say it right. So I wanted to say that, too. Our hospital's doing a great job, but on the other hand, when we did our contact tracing back to where he and I got sick from, it was from the emergency room. So, I just want to say that, the 10-day incubator period, and that my husband was in the emergency room. So we didn't, and as y'all know, Don and I are all out, all over the place, we don't wear masks, we did not get it from there. I've been in four or five meetings of 100 or more people, I have not got it from those meetings, I wanted to state that, too. The third thing I want to state is about, you were talking about Jay and disasters and that. I think people like constables that are an elected official and would be dealing with disasters, I did disaster recovery for 30 years, okay? Those people are the ones that should be in a meeting, and I don't think they should be denied to that meeting. I don't necessarily agree that we should keep everything confidential and out of the public arena, I think we need to know it so that we can prepare more ourselves individually. So, that's my statement, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I got, I got one, you want to go ahead?
No, go ahead.
So somehow, I knew that Dr. Granik would come up, and I just wanted to, I appreciate what you had to say, and I know that's your opinion, but I want to, I want to put something that's really kind of, they don't like to listen to, and that's numbers and statistics. Other, Texas population's 29,500,000 roughly. So far, and I went this morning to the COVID dashboard for Texas, there have been approximately 10 million tests conducted in Texas, so that's about nearly, right at a third. Over 920,000 are listed as recovered, and let's just analyze this data. If you're tested, you've got an 8% chance of being positive. If you're tested, and they test people that are showing some sort of symptom or they've been exposed. But here's the real data that I, that I'm looking at. What is the morbidity rate? We've had 20,500 deaths as of this morning's dashboard, I think that's yesterday's, the end of yesterday. If you do the math as a function of the population of Texas, that is a .0007 fatality rate. So you can, if you choose to wear a mask and run around and, and stay home, or, and if you're in a high-risk group, I certainly encourage you to do what you need to do for yourself. But those numbers right there do not scare me, and I'll tell you, it's really bothersome that we can't have opposing opinions. It's almost like an opposing opinion's not allowed. If I, if I disagree with you, I'm chastised for it. Anyway, that's what I got to say, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just one remark, wearing a mask doesn't protect you, it protects the person next to you. So that's to your statement, that's the way that we're told. If you've got it, you'll help protect somebody else by wearing a mask, but it won't protect you from getting it from somebody else, you can get it through your eyes and your nose, and I'm not even a doctor, so that's the point with that. The other thing that I do want to say, just talk on, a personal observation, social media, and you folks are going to get social media, and you're going to get some of this, what I see in social media that comes out, people take this stuff out of context, they'll put something on social media, but you'll only see one side of it. They'll pick and choose the statements or comments from a meeting that probably has a lot of things going on in it, but you won't see the whole meeting. So, I can kind of understand Mr. Webster wanting to have a meeting with open discussion, trying to figure out, how should we address the public, first of all, to stop a panic, that we're, you know, but yet give them proper information, all coming from the same voice of whether it's the school district, the county, the city, Dr. Blocker. So, I just say, I can understand, I was at the first meeting, and that was talked about. How do we do this without causing a panic, and people running out and getting toilet paper? Running to the hospital when it's already booked, how do we, how do we present this to the people? So, when you people say "secret meeting," it wasn't a secret meeting, it was some of the leaders of the county and the city, in the medical field, trying to figure out, how should we address this to the people on a joint, united stand at what we tell them? That's not a secret meeting. So, I understand where Jay's coming from, and you're going to see more of this on social media, this will be picked apart, there'll be pieces that come out, but only on the pieces that a certain group might want you to hear, and not the whole story. So, Judge, that's all I got to say.
Okay. Well, I'd just like to say that this document itself, this one-page document, when you read it, it really just calls out as a common sense document, it tells everybody, read it yourself, you've been around, we've been exposed to COVID for eight, nine months now, read it, make the decisions yourself. If you feel like it's too dangerous to go out, don't go out, get people to get your groceries, do whatever. If you feel like you're not going to catch it, you don't need to wear a mask, don't wear a mask if that's what you want to do. It's going to be the people around you that may frown upon you or, or say, I know that in certain grocery stores, you can't go in unless they put a mask on, but this is a very innocuous statement that has come out. I mean, it starts that we urge the citizens of Hood County and the surrounding cities to do their part in protecting their community from COVID-19. As we move into the holidays, there is an increased risk of exposure to COVID-19 due to the gathering of family and friends. Hood County has already begun to see substantial increase in positive COVID-19 tests, and the number of positive cases are on the rise. That is true. I mean, unfortunately, our juvenile detention center, you want to hear about something today, we had a big meeting about that today? It's in the juvenile detention center, half the staff has COVID-19. The children have COVID-19. It's serious, it's the first time that this has happened in the last week. It's never happened before. So, folks, how are we going to deal with that? We're trying to do the best we can with this, but it is serious, and it is on the rise. And I agree, is that the percentage of fatality, but the percentage of fatality overall, if you're above 70 and have some health issues, and you get COVID, your fatality rate is a lot different than if you're 14 to 18, or 18 to 25, or 18 to 35. If you're a young man, like J.C. Campbell here, who's barely 48 years old, he's in good shape, he didn't have to wear a mask, but, you know, a lot of people a little older than J.C. Campbell in here, and Faye, don't try to include yourself in on that. But it goes on to say, "We urge you to continue your efforts to prevent the spread of COVID-19 and other influenza-like illnesses as we enter flu season in order to keep our community at work and at school." You know, there's a lot of flu that may kill more people than the COVID-19, that's really possible, if you don't, so, you know, this says the same thing. The local ISVs are diligently working to continue in-person education for its students. There are a number of ways to prevent the spread of COVID-19. These include, if it's not feasible to maintain six feet of social distance, wear a mask or face covering when going out in public. Consistent handwashing with soap and water, as well as the use of hand sanitizer. Frequent cleaning and disinfecting regularly touched objects and surface. Coughing, covering your cough or sneeze with a tissue, and then promptly washing your hands. Avoiding close contact with people who are sick. Remember that some people without symptoms can still spread the virus. Stay at home when you're sick. Boy, that makes pretty good sense. My wife, I didn't really want to stay at home, I was not that ill, but I didn't feel well, and I knew I was sick, and my wife insisted that I stay at home, and I stayed at home two days, and I'm glad, I guess I'm glad I did. Mr. Dever was already out, so that was still left us with a quorum here, I guess, so I went ahead and said. Additionally, please do your part in stopping the spread of unsubstantiated information. Three easy ways to do this are, don't believe rumors, don't pass along rumors, go to trusted sources for information regarding COVID-19 and the local and federal responses. At this time, our local leadership is not considering any community shutdowns, please understand that. I don't think that's what we need, that hasn't been discussed, I am not for that. Things that have to get so much worse before I want any kind of an economic shutdown, shut down schools, shut down businesses, I am not for that, that has not been discussed. I don't want that. I don't think any like-minded citizens here at this time in Hood County want that. Everyone's cooperation in following these guidelines is appreciated. Thank you for doing your part to keep your community safe. Sincerely, the Granbury Mayor, Nyn Hewitt, Hood County Judge, Ron Massengill, Hood County Public Health Authority, Dr. Blocker, and Jay Webster. What is wrong with this?
I'll make a motion that we accept that, Judge.
Good. Motion been made by Commissioner Eagle that we accept what I've just read into the record, I'll make the second. So, motion been made in second to accept what I've read into the public record here. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank y'all all very much, let's all just try to help each other and work together, and let's, you know, Hood County has more in common with your neighbors sitting next to you than I guarantee you that you got next to anybody in Dallas, or Tarrant County, or New York City. So, let's all love each other and help each other and have a good Thanksgiving, that's what I would like, let's all get along. Okay? Okay, that brings us to the last two items that we got up here, which is number seven. Consider and take appropriate action to the renew 2018-2020 Hood County Tax Abatement Guidelines. Mr. Scott, I know you're here and I know Shay Hopkins is here, but we've already done this and I guess Dave Eagle, you're the one that...
Yeah, and, and, in 2018, I don't want to steal your thunder, but just to give a background. November 2018, or October, actually, 2018, the prior commissioner's court approved of the Hood County Tax Abatement Program as worded and it's in the, in our packet today. And all this is, this motion is about is to, it was a two-year deal, by the way. It expired last October. All we're asking the court to, all that's being asked of the court is to renew it verbatim. I don't, I don't see any changes in it. Now, Mr. Scott?
I'll change the date.
You're just going to change, re-renew it, basically. You got anything?
No, sir, not really. Actually, I was going to comment on the, and on the previous item also, but we are here to answer questions and I would defer to Shay. If you get, if you get into the weeds, she's got all the, all of that stuff. But on the previous question, I will tell you that, actually Judge, I tried to call you yesterday and couldn't get in touch with you, but I did speak to the mayor because we were wrestling with, we had our, our leaders in government luncheon coming up a week from Friday. And we had 100 people signed up to go to the Granbury Conference Center and with a great abundance of caution, yesterday I made the decision to move that to a virtual meeting. And we got absolutely no complaints and we got a ton of people saying, "Thank you very much. We appreciate it." I mean, it's just common sense stuff. You know, why, why do I want to risk 100 or 120 people and put them in a meeting when I can do the same thing virtually and, and actually give more coverage and more information out there? And a lot of our external folks that were supposed to speak did not want to come either and we're having trouble with it. So, we switched that to a virtual meeting. Does that mean all of our meetings are going to be virtual? Maybe, till things get better. I don't know. But it's, it's just a common sense thing. So, I, I'm sorry to take your time on, and I did one last thing. I want to, I just want to pass some kudos on to one of your folks. Jay Riley absolutely pulled our bacon out of the fire, set Sunday, two weeks ago, when we, we had put 90 Porsches on the square. And as Commissioner Cotton was also involved in that, thank, thank him very much. But we had, we had a conflict because y'all were working on the courthouse and we had, I walked, went down there and there was all kinds of equipment. And the contractor was tremendous too. He was easy to deal with, but Jay Riley was there all day, worked with us, got all the equipment off the square. We had put 90 Porsches on the square. Many, many of those people had never even been to Granbury. And they want to come back. They visited our businesses. I guarantee you, it was, it was a great day, but I got to hand it to Jay Riley. He is, he's a can-do guy. He's always got a great attitude. He was there all day moving barricades and helping out and so my hat's off to him.
I think so too. That's why I referred to him previously as the honorable Jay Riley, even though he's not, you're not an attorney, are you, Jay? But everybody says that. I mean, Judge Walton was just commenting about how Jay was able to automatically, for last week was the first jury week and how Jay was able to fix the hallway in so that it created a bigger space for all the jurors to do it. And he did it lickety-split with his own material. So, you are a can-do guy and you work with every department and I don't believe there's a single person in this county that has a complaint at least against you.
I appreciate it. But if it wasn't for the folks that I got working, they wouldn't have done the work.
Well, you do have a good crew, but it comes from the top and you're the best, okay? So, thank you for all you do for Hood County, Jay Riley. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Let me, let me know if you need a speaker.
I'm sorry?
Let me know if you need a speaker. I'll be happy to come by.
All right. So, now, did, let's see, you made a motion, did you make a motion?
I will. I'll make a motion to renew the, the 2018-2020 Hood County Tax Abatement Guidelines and to redate them 2020 to 2022 and today's date, starting and ending two years from now. Seconded a motion.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Eagle to adopt the new, 2021 to 2022 Hood County Tax Abatement Guidelines, seconded by Commissioner White. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Next, that brings us to, we're going to convene into a public hearing and take appropriate action regarding the designation of approximately 529.5 acres of land in southeast Hood County as a reinvestment zone under Texas Tax Code 312.401 for the West Camp Ranch Solar Project. And what this is, is we've got some people wanting to develop a solar project here in Hood County. But actually, it's going to take parts of three counties, 529 in Hood County. And we've had our resident guru here, our grarian commissioner, Mr. Dever, go out and look at this land with some other ones. It is very marginal land that really couldn't be used for anything else. We're going to do a, a solar project here. And the guy spoke to us, so that's what we're doing about is having this public hearing and to designate this acreage around as a reinvestment zone pursuant to the tax code so that hopefully we can give abatements to the solar system and also to other businesses that may want to build in and around those places. Am I right about that, Shay Hopkins? Is that an oversimplification?
No, that's perfect. And honestly, this is just a precursor. This is in the Tax Code 312.
Come on, come on up here, please.
So, in the Tax Code 312, this just has to happen prior to us being able to have a discussion about abatements in the future. So, this is just kind of part of the steps that we have to do and required to do.
Right.
So, I think your simplification was perfect.
Hey Judge, has anybody signed up to speak to this?
No, but you can.
No, I, no, I don't have a problem.
No, but nobody, nobody has signed up to speak on this.
We're in, we're in a public hearing, right?
Yep, we're in a public hearing.
We're, we're going to zoom you in on our deal.
On our deal? Well, I think this is, I mean, this is, I think it's good to have this solar technician. I mean, it's really improving all along and this guy that we spoke to is out of Denmark. And I just had to give him one pointer. He laid his hat down this way.
Uh-oh.
All, and the only thing that I told him, I said, "What was his name? Hens, wasn't it?" I said, "Hens, I mean, if you're going to fool people when you walk into Texas, don't lay your hat down that way. Lay it down this way up here."
You're in Texas.
And so, he was really good natured, but a really good guy and very intelligent and was a fighter pilot there and trained right where you were, the commander. Right, Mike Scott? That kind of impressed me right there. So, anyway, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to designate approximately 529.5 acres of land in southeast Hood County as a reinvestment jo, zone under Texas Tax Code 312.401 for the West Camp Ranch Solar Project.
Seconded. Okay. Motion is made and second regarding the designation of 529 acres as a reinvestment zone for the West Camp Ranch Solar Project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Congratulations, Shay Hopkins. You've worked very hard on that. Fire Marshal? Fire Marshal, come on, step on up here. We can't hear you in the back. You didn't get your dollar, I notice, but I may have to hold you in contempt of court.
Take five from him.
Sorry, would I be out of line if I went back and made a comment about the issues on item six?
No.
I know I was backtracking a little bit. I was trying to save you all the trouble of watching me walk up here. I've developed Achilles tendonitis, so, oh, something. I, I wanted to go back and make a comment about the, moving the emergency management office back onto the fire marshal's office. The 11 years that I worked here in this office as a deputy, I would say probably 80 to 85% of our workload was normally focused into emergency management, which means we have 20 to 25% of our time that we can focus into fire protection, public service, the public protection, a liaison to eight different fire departments, approximately 280 firefighters. I've always given 110% of everything I've done, but something gets neglected when 80% of our workload is separated from what it is we're designed to do.
It's worse than if you have a catastrophe going on.
Yes, and if there's a disaster, that's not necessarily something on fire, that's, all of our attention gets focused to that. So, we are not the first county to ever come out with an Office of Emergency Management. There are some that don't even have a fire marshal's office. They only have an Office of Emergency Management. So, in my opinion, it's one of the best moves that we've done to have an office that's dedicated towards planning for nuclear disasters or chemical plants that blow up that go beyond the scope of what our fire departments and our fire service is able to handle. So, I, I just...
Not every county in, in Texas or the United States has a nuclear power plant in their backyard.
Correct. Correct.
I'm with you on this. I'm glad it's the best move we've ever made. Jay, you've been a blessing to Hood County and I'm, I'm all in with it.
And, and we've always had a very good rating on our emergency plans because we work so closely with the power plant and everything else. But I, I just wanted to make a comment and I meant to say, and I didn't mean to say this after Mr. Crisswell left. I wanted to come up when all that was going on, but I didn't want to trouble y'all with waiting for me to walk up here, but...
I can understand his concern, but he don't know all the working parts. I mean, I do, I, I understand his concern, but there's a lot more parts that he don't understand that's going on.
Right. And the Office of Emergency Management is more than just dealing with COVID. That just happens to be something that happened right after we developed the Office of Emergency Management.
Nuclear disasters, high winds, sheer winds.
Right.
The list goes on. It's not just diseases.
And, and the amount of planning that goes into that prior to the response part of it, it's, like I say, it was 80% of our workload and it wasn't just the workload of the fire marshal himself. That, that workload was also played down to each of the deputies. So, you know, when you're having to put 80% of your time and your work into emergency planning and everything else, something's got to give. And a lot of times, it was our investigations and, you know, it takes a lot of time to investigate an arson and, and track people down and everything else.
That's why we lost our previous fire marshal because she saw the working parts going on and said, "I want to be a fire marshal. I want to be two or three hats at one time."
Correct.
That's why we lost her. And we got a good replacement, so I appreciate you doing it.
Well, I try my best.
You know, Judge, I'll say something. This has not been an easy time the last eight months, you know. I don't like the, the, I guess, the rhetoric sometimes that I hear out in the public, but, you know, everybody that works for the county or a city or, or first responders hospital, everybody's trying to do the best they can to get through this. We will get through it. I don't know when, but, you know, I know that Jay does a lot more than what people see, you know. He's done a good job. He has brought us, you know, a lot of money. But I really believe if we would all take a breath and try to look out after each other and, and just do what, do the responsible thing for yourself, take care of yourself, you know. We never have talked about shutting down anything or nothing like that. That, that, that's a rumor I got hit with it Thursday morning. I said, "That's not going to happen." And the governor has said he won't do it. We'll see that. But, you know, this is a very close community and I don't want to see it ripped apart over, over a really bad situation.
I agree. But I just wanted to go on record in saying the Office of Emergency Management is more than COVID. And all of us in the emergency response, the sheriff, myself, Jay, EMS, we all work closely and I, I would say we all work very well together.
That's what I was going to bring up is that the, when I first came into office, I mean, it was just totally disarrayed between the fire marshals and the sheriff's office and every, there are other offices that are up there. And ever since you have become the fire marshal and Jay has become the emergency manager coordinator, I've never seen everything work as smoothly as it has done and how y'all have accomplished so much. And like what Dr. Glenn has said about how y'all have worked together and how Jay Webster's really responsible for keeping Granbury Independent School Districts open and keeping them open. I mean, he has said that, so God bless him and God bless...
I got one more thing to say, you know, you know, this is a time of Thanksgiving. We still live in the best country in the world. And I'm going to tell everybody, and I don't know if it's proper, but God is still on the throne and that's who we all need to look to right now.
Absolutely.
Amen.
Sorry, I didn't mean to digress back to something we've already chewed on for a while.
Thank you for bringing that to our, when he looked at emergency manager plans and they're still referring to the telephone system, to Ma Bell. Ma Bell, that's been gone for 25 years, hasn't it? He had a lot of planning to update. That's what he's done too. So, congratulations to him, but I think we all know really what he's done. Thank you, Jay Webster.
Thank you, sir.
The two Jays are our heroes here in Hood County. Jay Webster and Jay Riley. Okay. Thank you all. Meeting is adjourned.